If it's a regular meeting, it's filmed by the board. We don't authorize private groups to bring cameras and take photos.
Public meeting law states that the public can video. That's the open meeting law.
Well, then you'll have to make a complaint about it.
I'm here videoing.
You're not going to be allowed to.
That's the law.
No, 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 no. No, you know what? I mean, with a three-hour delay, we might...
Do you have a camera here?
No.
I see a lot of files coming in. I can be outside.
All right.
Good evening. For those of you who haven't figured out, my name is Jeffrey Selchek. I'm the designated hearing officer for this matter. Before we conduct the hearing, the board has to determine the nature of the hearing in terms of opening the closed. I'm offering now to Mr. Kreps.
Turn over to the board president.
Okay. We'd like to propose to go into recess into executive session for the purpose of to address the removal of a particular person from the office pursuant to sections 105-F and/or 108-1 of the public officers law and for the purpose of determining whether or not this hearing will be held in public for an executive session. They have a motion. Mr. Kreps, second Mrs. Uriel. All those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have them.
We're going to have a conference on the other conference room. Right around the corner here.
Shut the door.
Either way.
What has determined that we can do the public hearing?
On the record, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Selchek. And pursuant to a meeting of the Board of Education held on December 19th, 2017, I have been designated as hearing officer to conduct a hearing involving Board member John Kurzio. Board is present and is represented by counsel. Mr. Kurzio is present and is also represented by counsel. Before we begin, I'm going to take one hearing officer exhibit. That is the charges, which are dated January 2nd, 2018, revised January 5th, 2018. I'm going to receive that as hearing officer number one, as those are the charges that we are conducting a hearing on. Any other exhibits can be offered and marked by the parties, and we will discuss their introduction at the end.
Are they hearing officer one together as one exhibit?
Hearing officer one is the two-page charges.
Right, both of them.
You want to take both? Are they identical?
Except for the date, though. I don't care. I just wonder how I mark them.
Yeah, I'm just taking the revised version. I don't think there's any need for both.
Okay, fine.
We'll mark it. But they are dated January 2nd, 18, revised. I don't believe it's necessary to take the board minutes from December 19th. I don't think there's any dispute that I've been properly designated to hear this now.
Correct.
Thank you. With that behind us, I'm ready to hear an open statement if you'd like to make one.
I think I'd first like to call the sequestration witnesses.
Okay. Who were the witnesses? Do we get...
I don't know who the witnesses are. Mr. Sussman and the witnesses on my end theoretically are Andy Levine. He will be a witness, who's superintendent of schools.
Ervin.
I'm sorry, Ervin, I'm sorry. Susan Deek theoretically. Actually, I take that back. Give me a moment. I'm not sure you can do that. This is indeed theoretically.
You got two witnesses.
And the person who... The person who did the videotaping, since there's videotapes involved. And if I need to lay a foundation, I don't know if I will, he would also be a witness.
And have you identified witnesses yet? Mr. Kurzio stays. So we'll sequester the witnesses as requested.
Right.
So I have a seat?
So we're out of here.
No, we're in excellent. All of them.
Okay. Okay, kind of burnt myself with that one thing. Happens. And I'm ready.
I'm ready to hear an open statement.
The evidence will establish that Mr. Kurzio took the oath of office on July 1st, 2016, on which we swore to support the Constitution of the State of New York and to faithfully discharge the duties of the position of trustee of the criminal sentencing. The evidence will establish that at the time of the events in question, the criminal sentencing Board Policy 2160 provides that a board member may be removed from office for violating his or her oath of office and/or neglecting his or her duty. And that also establishes the procedure where followed for determination by the board as to whether Mr. Kurzio should be removed as a board trustee, including the designation of the hearing. It's well established under Article 8, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution, a school district is prohibited from allowing the use of public funds for a private purpose, case on point by the New York Court of Appeals. Eventually we'll figure it out. I'll just wait till I wrap this little copy up.
You don't want to lose it?
I'm not sure I can do it to that beat.
My daughter, she's pretty fast.
Okay. Anyway, the primary case establishes that you can't use public funds for a private purpose is Corning Jr. versus Village Laurel Hollow at 48 New York Second, 348, 1979 case. I can make this available to you at the conclusion of the hearing, during the hearing. In fact, every case I mention, I can make it available.
Thank you.
The evidence will show that what happened here through Mr. Kurzio using his... So what happened here was Mr. Kurzio used his position as a board member, speaking as a board member, during a public board meeting, with his speech recorded on video and placed on the district website, as well as circulated to communities, to the community through a video service paid for by the district, to express his privately held position on November 21, 2017, and December 5, 2017. And we will present the DVDs that were made of Mr. Kurzio's statements. And in fact, the DVDs will be of the full board meeting, but we'll probably only play the portion of Mr. Kurzio's statements because that's the law enforcement directive. Anyway, in these statements from the board dais as a board member, Mr. Kurzio stated that members of the community should vote against funding a district capital project during an upcoming election addressing that question. It's well established, as a matter of law, the lone individual board member is entitled to express his views about issues concerning the district. He may not use public resources such as videotaping of board meetings made available to the community to persuade members of the community to vote a certain way or to convey favoritism, partisanship, partiality, approval or disapproval, such as Mr. Kurzio engaged in on November 21, 2017, and December 5, 2017. The Commission of Education has made that clear in a legion of cases, including, and I'll cite them for you, the matter of Dinan, D-I-N-A-N, which is at decision number 137510, matter of Weiss, which is at decision number 14176, matter of Carroll, C-R-O-L-L, which is at decision number 14871, matter of Hubbard, which is at decision number 14259, matter of Gabrielle, G-A-B-R-Y-E-L, which is at decision number 15158. It's also been made clear by the Court of Appeals in a case called Phillips v. Moore. Moore is M-A-U-R-E-R. Phillips is spelled two Ls. That's 67 New York Second, 672, through 1986 decision. I have three copies of each of these cases. I've cited one for Mr. Sussman, one for the hearing officer, and one to retain. It's our position, it's the board's position, that by engaging misconduct, Mr. Kurzio caused the district to violate Article 3, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution, and he himself did so as well.
Article 3?
Article... Sorry, Article 8, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution. That he engaged in neglective duty by doing so and engaged in improper conduct by doing so wrong.
I can counsel understand the position of the board. Does the respondent have an extended statement? It's just thought.
I'm Michael Sussman. I represent Mr. Kurzio. Good evening. The evidence before you will show two charges. One relates to events of November 21st. The other relates to events of December 5th. These are two weeks apart. The events on November 21st are comparable in nature, as you'll see, to the events of December 5th. What you will hear as evidence in this case is that after the statements of November 21st, there was no response by any school board member, no response by the school superintendent, no response by counsel, no suggestion of any sort that Mr. Kurzio was engaging in improper or inappropriate behavior, none whatsoever. After the speech of December 5th, several days later, the people of this community overwhelmingly rejected the proposition for the expenditure of some $85.6 million on two bond issues. And within a couple of days, I believe it was on December 19th, if I remember the date, the school board acted to try to remove the most outspoken member, that is, Mr. Kurzio, who had campaigned broadly in the community, making no claim that he was representing the school board, quash school board, making a claim that he, as a school board member, with information pertinent to the community, was vehemently opposed to what he viewed as an over expenditure as reflected in these two bond propositions. Mr. Kurzio published information broadly in the community, disclaiming that he was speaking for the school board at every turn, never representing that he was speaking for the school board, and indicated that he was speaking as an individual of a strongly argued position. Now, Mr. Rushfield references a board policy 2160. The board policy is nowhere referenced in any charge before you. The only matter referenced in any charge before you is Article 8 of the Constitution, which I argue has absolutely no applicability here. My client did nothing contrary to what others did. Others did it in different ways. The school district, quash school district, including board members, put out what amounts to a puff piece using school district monies in support of the bond issue. The board spent significant monies to circulate that broadly in the community. The board took that position because the majority of its members believed that the bond issue was meritorious and thought there'd been support. Mr. Kurzio, and I believe maybe one other member, took a contrary position. I don't believe my client is charged with violating any rules and regulations of the board. I don't believe he violated any rules and regulations of the board. Likewise, with regard to Board of Education, state Board of Education law policy, again, there's no citation to any of that in either of the charges, and it's inapt and shouldn't be considered by a hearing officer. Now, there's a claim that my client made use of resources that were somehow public resources for a private agenda. That claim is more than fallacious. My client had no private agenda. My client is a fiduciary, and remains a fiduciary of the school district. His responsibility as a school board member is to a constituency which elected him to broader community. And in that capacity, when debate occurs with regard to a subject, critical subject to the community's well-being, my client not only has any duty, he has a responsibility to make clear to the community his position with regard to that issue. He ran on this position. He was elected with regard to this position, and he has every right to articulate that, just as all the other board members have that right. And he did so. And he did so. It appears to me that what occurred here is that this young 20, 21-year-old college student is the youngest school board member, the youngest elected official in New York State, is essentially being run out of town, if you will, by a group of individuals who are trying to use him as a scapegoat for the defeat of this bond issue, which overwhelmingly was defeated by this community, overwhelmingly defeated. And I believe that sort of repressive behavior should be stopped right here, right now. It's inappropriate. Counsel refers to cases, each of the cases, as we'll argue in post-fraud recovery, sort of status quo, none of whom have bearing, as I view the situation here. You have an issue of public importance. This gentleman was speaking as a public servant. He was not speaking in any private capacity. He was not speaking with a private agenda, any more than any of these other ladies or gentlemen were speaking with a private agenda. His position differed from theirs. He had every much as right to represent his position as they had to represent theirs. With regard to the use of district property, resources, and like, the decision to video and publicize meetings, this is a decision made in a democratic tradition, so as to expand those who know, have understanding of what a public body like a school board is doing. As we all know, those who participate in elections for school district is abysmally low. The idea of publicity and the idea of publication of these meetings is intended to give broader scope and meaning to them for the public education. Part of that education in democracy is that both sides are heard. Not that merely one side is heard, not that only the majority who have a particular point of view is heard, but that all sides are heard. So the effort here, in my view, is to shut up one side. Whether I agree with that side or not personally, doesn't matter. Whether you agree, doesn't matter. Whereas democracy, and any effort to suppress a particular point of view is reprehensible in my opinion. Now, the resources he used were the same exact resources every school board member had to use. In other words, they all did speak. They debated these issues in November. They debated them in October. There was public discourse about whether this bond issue, there were two of them, ought to have been promulgated as they were or should not be propounded as they were. And that was the nature of a good deal of public discourse in and out of the meetings. He didn't make a determination to publicize his speech over any particular media. That was a decision that the board made in general. It's a generic decision. It had nothing to do with this particular matter. It was simply a means they used in general to communicate. Every school board member had the same right, and many of them in public meetings have made their particular positions known with regard to these issues. So in summation, I think this is honestly an outrageous attempt to suppress opinion. I think it's unconstitutional. I think the decisions, if any, have upheld this sort of oppressive behavior, are wrong. And I believe at the end of the day, our courts, if necessary, will intervene and desist from this sort of behavior by a school board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I understand the position of the respondent. I'm ready to hear your testimony. Can you move this closer? Move this down so we can have more room on the side. Just keep moving a little bit so I can look at it.
I have an extra seat here.
If you could just move this... So I can look at it. All set. Ready for me?
Let's call Mr. Irvin in.
Move this up a little more, maybe a tad.
What, plenty of room?
Yeah, you guys have room. Right here, sir.
Okay.
State your name for the record, please.
Andy Irvin.
Is that the last name?
I-R-V-I-N.
You have your right hand taken oath. Do you swear or affirm on the penalty of perjury to tell the truth? Let's proceed.
Yes, I do. Mr. Irvin, what's your position on schools? Superintendent of schools and superintendent of schools. I believe this is a problem of... I do. Do we attend board meetings? Yes, I do. In July of 2016, was an oath of office administered to Mr. Kurzio, one of the board members who would come on the scene? Yes, who wants? And did Mr. Kurzio and other board members have to sign an oath of allegiance? Yes, they did. Show you this document. Is that the oath of allegiance signed by Mr. Kurzio?
Mark, could you just send me a travel log back and see what you're doing? Thank you.
Certainly his name. I can't find the signature, but I believe that is back and re-signed. Offer this as board one.
Mark for identification as board of education exhibit number one.
Respondent indicates that's the signature, therefore no objection.
No objection. Board one is received. Thank you, gentlemen.
In November and December of 2017, did the board have a policy regarding code of ethics of school district officers on police? Yes. Show you this document. Was that the policy that was in place? Yes, it was. Offer that as board number two. I'm sorry.
Well, I already stated an objection to this.
Let me mark it first, and then I'll give you the objection for the record. Mark for identification as board exhibit number two is a document entitled, I guess it's entitled Code of Ethics, School District Officer and Employee Code of Ethics, number 2160, adopted November 28, 2006, being offered. Now I'll hear your objection.
Is there any claim of violation of code of ethics? It should have been part of the charges. It's not.
There's not?
Excuse me. With regard to my client, there's no evidence, nor do I believe he ever received it, was advised to quit it or otherwise. So that's my view.
By the way, the document's being offered for a portion of two pages. They're numbered, but I'm gonna count from the back.
Okay.
Three from the back. Sets forth the top basis for removal. A board member may be removed from office for violating their oath of office and/or neglecting their duty, which is set forth in the charges. The next page, next to the last page, has a board member removal process, which is the process whereby we get to serve as a hearing officer in this manner, and sets forth a procedural reform. It's offered for those two pages.
And those two pages alone?
Yes.
I'll read my objection.
For those two pages, those two pages alone, which provides the procedure to conduct this hearing, I'll receive the exhibit. Thank you. That's received.
So that would be board number two.
Or two. One second. I want to mark the new pages here. So I have eight pages, and we're receiving it only for pages six and seven. Proceed.
Mr. Irvin, did you attend a special meeting of the board on August 26, 2017? Yes, I did. What was that meeting called? There were two reasons. One, a special meeting was for the purposes of discussing a proposed capital project. And then following that was a board retreat that was scheduled. And who was present at that meeting? Myself, Eric Stark, who was our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Janet Warden, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Personnel, Joe Simoni, Director of People Personnel Services. I believe President Riley, Board President Riley was there, Vice President Kreps was there, Trustee Uriel was there. I don't believe that Mr. Cody was there at that session. Trustee Neteras was there, Trustee Reese was there, and Trustee Kurzio was there. In addition, our attorney, one of our attorneys, Mike Lambert, was present, as was our architect, Dave Samson. Did you always have attorneys present at board meetings? No, we didn't. Why was Mr. Lambert invited to this meeting? Two purposes. One, there could potentially have been some questions about the capital project and a land purchase option contract. And also, there were questions about board members and their... the appropriateness of board members in supporting or not supporting the bond, the potential bond vote, based on some concerns that were raised over Mr. Kurzio's activity during the previous budget. Were there concerns that were raised about Mr. Kurzio concerning the previous season?
Just objection to clarify. Do you mean concerns raised at this meeting of Mr. Kurzio's presence? Do you mean concerns raised before? When are you speaking in that?
Please clarify.
When were the concerns raised to you for purposes of just having Mr. Lambert here? Prior to the board meeting, prior to that special meeting. Who raised those concerns to you? President Riley. What were the concerns he raised to you? That Mr. Kurzio was actively campaigning against and urging voters to vote no for the budget through letters to the editor, Facebook activity, and I believe some flyers that were distributed. Did you see the letters to the editor that Mr. Riley was referring to? Yes. I show you the document. That's not even marked, Mr. Sussman. Your hearing officer.
Mark for identification as board exhibit number three is what appears to be a letter to the editor. It's noted Putnam County Courier, 5/9/17, and it's signed by the respondent. Shown to the witness.
Is this one of the letters you were referring to? Yes. ID board number four.
Mark for identification as board exhibit number four is another letter to the editor. This one from the Putnam County Press Times, dated 5/10/17.
Was this one of the letters that you were referring to? Offer board three and four.
I'm going to object on this ground. It tells us that the concerns were expressed by another person. Counsel's now asking him about these, the letters referred to. I'm not clear on the connection. This is from May of 2017. It has nothing to do with the charges, as far as I know. It's attenuated in time. There's no testimony as to from the person allegedly had the concerns, whether these were the letters that prompted his concern, and what, if anything, he did about it. So I think this is a bit far field without connection.
The letters are for purposes of explaining why Mr. Lambert was there, and then what Mr. Lambert interfered to get the meeting, which we'll have testimony about. They all lead up.
The letters...
These letters to the editor were raised to the witness, and they lead to Mr. Lambert being called to the meeting.
Well, tell me about, when we talk about the concerns, who raised concerns? There were concerns about these letters.
Correct.
And who raised these concerns?
They were specifically raised, I mean, by President Riley, Board President, that there were, that both he and, I believe, other board members had raised concerns to him.
To him, meaning to him.
To President Riley.
And in your understanding, that's why the attorney was invited to this particular board meeting on August?
That's one reason.
The other one was the project.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that this material yet, but I'll take them as relevant. Board three and board four are received. Board Three and Board Four are received.
So did Mr. Lambert make a, was Mr. Lambert asked questions at this board meeting about this issue of communications to the public by board members?
Yes.
And who raised the question?
President Riley.
Can you recall what his question was?
His question was for asking Mike Lambert to explain to the board what was appropriate and not appropriate for board members to do regarding the regarding publicizing and supporting the project.
And did Mr. Lambert address the board in response to those questions?
Yes, he did.
What did Mr. Lambert tell the board members?
Mr. Lambert specifically told the board members that as a board member, it is not permissible for you to attempt to sway a voter for or against a budget vote, a capital project vote, a board election. That you're not involved with.
Did Mr. Lambert explain what was appropriate?
Yes.
What did he say?
Factual information. The board should be providing factual information regarding the project to the public.
Did Mr. Lambert make any communications about representing oneself as a board member versus representing oneself as a citizen?
I'm gonna just note my objection. If Mr. Lambert wants to come in here and tell us directly as an attorney what he thinks the law is, I think that's fine, keep it for us example. Perhaps being done through this process is totally inappropriate, 100% inappropriate.
You should, what to say to the board members?
And that's not what the issue was.
Excuse me, Mr. Sussman, I didn't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me.
Oh, you did interrupt me, but you all did it while we were in the stocks.
Well, now you're reading.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Irvin.
The issue here isn't whether Mr. Lambert's view of the law is. The issue is, is what was communicated by an attorney for purposes of this case, what was communicated by an attorney to board members of Q M S Curzio concerning their responsibilities. And that goes to whether he's guilty of these charges. In fact, counsel raised the issue in that context about, well, how does he know what this somebody can do? So Mr. Lambert commented upon what he could do and can't do. And certainly, I concluded through a person present at that meeting, as to what he said. Because what he said is relative to the fact that he said it.
You were present when Mr. Lambert said this at the board meeting?
I wasn't.
Was this in a public session or in an executive session?
This was in public session. There was one member of the public present.
And was Mr. Curzio present at the time?
Yes.
Well, I'm not gonna take it for the truth of the matter, because it is hearsay, but I'll take it for the fact that this is what the witness recalled being sent to the board by the attorney. Continue. Finish saying now what the attorney told the board.
Okay.
You left office, should only provide factual information.
Correct. Thank you. Specifically, Mr. Lambert said that as district administrators or board members, that we should only be providing factual information. And although you never give up your right to free speech, you need to identify something as your own personal opinion, not that of the school board or of your, in your service as a school board member. Or school district administrator.
Are, was that meeting videotaped, by the way?
I don't believe it was.
Right. Is there a reason why that one wasn't videotaped?
That was a special meeting, and to be very honest, we generally do not videotape special meetings. We contract with someone to videotape our regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay. Thank you. So a regularly scheduled meeting was videotaped?
Yes.
And when a videotape is made of a regularly scheduled meeting, what happens to the videotape?
We contract with a, I'm going to say an individual, but I'm sure that he has a component, Paul Holman, who provides the service of videotaping our meetings. He then sends our district clerk, Sue Dyke, both electronically and in DVDs copies.
And what, did the videotapes appear anywhere that the district maintains?
Soon as she gets them, she puts them on the website for public view, and they also get distributed to local libraries. I'm not sure if they get distributed to county halls, but I know they get distributed to local libraries.
Okay. What's the gap between a meeting and the video of the meeting being placed on the website?
I'm gonna say that they're usually uploaded in a week.
Does the district get billed for the videotaping services?
Yes, they do.
Board Five, right?
Correct. Marked for identification as Board Exhibit Number Five is a bill, an invoice from Euro Video Productions LLC in the amount of $410. Videotaped Board of Education meeting on November 21, 2017. Board Five for identification.
Is this the bill issued for the videotaping of the meeting on November 21, 2017?
Yes, it is.
Is this bill paid by the district?
Yes, it was.
Offer of Board Five in evidence.
No objection.
Thank you. That's received.
Offer as.
Six.
Six.
Marked as Board Exhibit Six is an invoice from Euro Video Productions LLC for a board meeting held on December 5, 2017, also in the amount of $410.
Also no objection.
No objection. That's received. One second, gentlemen. Proceed.
I'm gonna see if we can shorten this hearing. Were videotapes taken of the hearings of those two dates that would just produce evidence of the charges?
Those board meetings, yes.
I have the videos. I can bring in a witness to testify that he's a little took the videos, if I need to lay a foundation. These videos are on the district website. There really shouldn't be a dispute.
I don't, I haven't raised any issue.
No, I'm raising, I'm just.
No, I haven't raised any issue with this.
You won't have an objection to the introduction of the videos?
So why would, why would play the?
They're relevant.
Yeah.
Well, let's mark them, and then we can watch them. Are you providing the show?
Yes. Thank you. I have multiple copies, so. Can we bring the video graph right, because I think he can set it up for us in terms of showing us where it is?
Can I grab him?
Sure.
While he's doing that, let's mark the two videos.
Okay, in order?
Yes.
11/21/17.
Marked as Board Exhibit Number Seven.
I'm sorry.
No objection. Board Seven was received.
Just, just hold on a second. I'm trying to be clear what's on. Is this a video of the entire meeting?
Yes.
No objection.
Thank you.
12/5/17.
B7 is the video of 11/21/17. And the same question for Board Exhibit Eight. Is it a video of the 12/5/17 meeting, is the full meeting?
Full meeting.
Then there's no objection to that. The Board Eight is received.
Let's arrange for them to play. We're going to, I'm going to have the witness locate on each portion, Mr. Curzio, what Mr. Curzio's statement appears. Is this the basis for the charges?
That's fine, but you should understand that you've given me the whole meeting, and I will, I will watch the whole meeting.
I understand that. And if Mr. Sussman wants to hold and play at some point?
Well, 10 after 8, so I don't think I'm gonna do that.
I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Go right ahead, Mark. No one's arguing.
I intend to watch the full meeting.
Should be watched. That's my.
Yes. I have the time. That was told there. Gotcha.
If you just wanna do a highlighted portion, that's fine. Where is our screen? That little screen?
It's gonna appear on there. No, that's a little, I told him to show the big picture. Told him to show the, told him to show the word.
So you just did your, I'm gonna do a record.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Yeah, you don't have to try to take it.
Yeah, I want to try to.
You don't have to describe.
Yeah, that's the first one that we're gonna do?
Yep.
I can't do it anymore.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for November 21.
Okay, so I'm gonna fast forward to the few last points of interest.
This is November 21, yes?
Yes, this is November 21, 2017.
When you get there, when you get there, just stop.
Yeah.
Before you play it, just get to where you gotta go and stop.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm right about here.
Just so we're, just before you start, can you give us the hour into this? The designation of this, please?
The time on this thing, so we can find it ourselves.
So for the record, one second. For the record, what we're looking at now is what's received in evidence as Board Exhibit Seven, which is a video of the board meeting of November 21, 2017. And the person who is handling the video is now gonna tell us at what point in the video I can find this section that you're showing now.
Okay. It's 1 hour, 28 minutes, and 26 seconds.
Okay, let's see.
This project, if approved, will blow a hole right through the already heavy tax burden on the homeowners and businesses of this district. The so-called only $128.47 per year average tax hike fails to mention that this increase would be on top of the yearly tax increase that this board has consistently, for at least the last 30 years, imposed on the taxpayer of this district. We are already among the highest tax districts in the nation, and this project will help to cement that status and unfortunately also hasten the exodus of our hard-pressed seniors. Additionally, the town of Kent taxpayers will take a double hit as commercial property will be removed from the tax rolls in order to fulfill the demands of this project. Therefore, I strongly encourage the voters of this district to come out on Monday, December 11, 2017, and send a message to this board that we are taxed enough and to vote no on this project. I want the taxpayers of this district to know that they have a friend on this school board who does not believe that you are under taxed.
We'll just wait for them to see.
Same thing on December 5, 2017.
Okay. You do the same for me, then? When you get to the spot, just tell me. Don't say.
And tell us where it is on the recording.
No problem.
That's fine. On the record, so we're now going to look at an excerpt from the video marked and received in evidence as Board Exhibit Eight, which is a video of the meeting of 12/5/17. And we're gonna see where it's located, where on this video, sir?
1 hour, 17 minutes, and 10 seconds.
Please play.
Sure, I have some. First of all, Vice President Krebs, you're entitled to your own opinions, but respectfully, not your own facts. And at those board meetings, I did go to them, and I properly identified that those were my personal opinions, not necessarily reflective of any other board members or the board as a whole. So they were my personal opinions, and it does concern the various towns and the county as far as this project, because it removes commercial property from the tax rolls. So it does have a direct influence on or effect on the towns. But while I was thinking about what to say tonight about the capital project vote, I came across a letter to the editor in the Putnam Examiner, which will stand tonight as my comment. And it's very reflective of the comment made by Mr. Pareskiva just prior. But the title of it is that the Carmel Bond proposal should be voted down. And the letter states, "As a senior citizen, I am strongly opposed to the Carmel Schools' capital project and the crushing tax increase that goes along with it. The project, which asks the taxpayers for $85.6 million, is unsustainable and will surely lead to many more senior citizens being forced to leave the Carmel School District. Unfortunately, the Carmel School Board has shown no regard for those of us on fixed incomes and has raised our taxes every single year without fail for as long as I can remember. The Carmel School taxes are higher than most of, if not all of, the neighboring school districts. We are now faced with being at a breaking point, and a further tax increase, the second one possibly approved this year alone, is nothing short of being completely inconsiderate of the senior citizens. It has also come to my attention that the capital project entails removing one of our few commercial properties in Kent from the tax rolls, which will add insult to injury to town of Kent taxpayers by shrinking our tax base further. I am a strong believer in offering our children an excellent education. However, with a stagnant and even a slight decline in student enrollment, this project cannot be justified as enhancing educational opportunities. Furthermore, the ensuing tax increase will only serve to drive these same students, parents, and grandparents out of the Carmel School District in search of a more reasonably taxed district. I encourage everyone to vote no on the capital project on Monday, December 11, and it was signed by Mr. Dennis Illuminati of Lake Carmel. I could not agree more with that letter. That is what I have been saying for the past several months as we have debated the capital project. It comes with an average tax increase of $128.47 per year increase. Obviously, homes and businesses that are assessed higher see an even higher increase, and that's on top of the annual increase that has been levied by this board for at least 30 years. And as we saw from one of our guest speakers tonight and from the letter, it's unsustainable, and it's driving our senior citizens out, and it's making it almost impossible for young people to stay here and build their family lives here.
Now, just, I'm gonna comment because I'm not gonna let it go because we're on the video, and I just have a few comments. First of all, my comment to Mr. Milstad had to do with that it was not the entire board, that it was one board member who attended town meetings. I didn't comment on what you actually said at the town meetings.
No, but you said it was inappropriate because?
It was, it's inappropriate because what you should do, while you're very, very active in reading everything and doing everything, you pick yourself up a copy of the school law and start reading it.
I did.
You did, so you can. You did, so you can see the word in. I mean, you can't tell me it's not there because it is a fact that the word inappropriate, as a school board member is there. You cannot sit at this table as a school board member and think that you're a private citizen. Maybe you should get up at the microphone during the open session and then you can do it. The other thing is, um, and I know Dennis Illuminati for a lot of years, to say to me and for anyone in the Town of Kent to comment about taking property off of the tax rules when these folks have lived in this community and have not done one thing to encourage commercial development to help the taxes of this school district in the Town of Kent. And that's why I've always called it the Town of Kent. And I can call it that because I live here and I pay taxes to the Town of Kent and you don't. So to go to my town meeting and start spewing that, I take offense to that. When we take this off the tax rules, if they had bothered to do stuff with it, it wouldn't have been available to take off the tax rules. Many years ago, we went Patterson, we tried to sell our highway department, um, over in the Town of Kent so we could have an outlet center come in. That went down to flames. Patterson Crossing, that went down to flames.
I had intended to keep going.
It's okay, you should keep going.
Very important.
Is that...
It's a business.
...businesses, and that's after they put Suez in to encourage business. So when it comes to the Town of Kent, me living here since nineteen eighty-three, I think I'm fairly well-versed in what's gone on in the Town of Kent and why our school taxes are so high. So when we have commercial development, our school taxes go down. But we in the Town of Kent and in parts of Carmel, we don't want that. We wanna be the country, but we also know what our problem is in taxes, and it is a problem. And part of the problem, what you don't seem to understand and you benefited for many years from the taxes and an education in the Carmel Central School District, is nobody seems to wanna look at the entire picture. No one wants to look at that when you go down to New York City, a lot of state aid for schools go to New York City and not to what we refer to as the low-need districts. So therefore, when it comes to aid, we have to make up the difference in taxes. I'm not a tax person. I don't like taxes at all. I despise taxes, as do most of our residents. But this is the card debt that we're dealt. And until something happens where there's a better balance in commercial property, um, we'll have to do that now. Eventually, what's gonna happen, and I don't know the answer to this either, but I can tell you eventually, the Department of Transportation and the Department of DEC is gonna walk onto that property and they're gonna put a lock on the gate and there will be no buses and that will be closed because they won't tolerate it anymore. And then we don't know what we're gonna do. So I think the committee, which was formed by the community, not by, it wasn't the board making these decisions. It was a community effort for our committee. They came up with what is a very fiscally responsible proposition. Um, I will not, as a board member, after I made my decision to vote yes or no, I will not sit here and be inappropriate and say to the community which way they should vote. Our job is to put this forward. It is the community's job to then say yea or nay. And I'm like, kinda like the grandfather. It's always business, it's never personal. So if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But I'm gonna continue to work for the benefit of the students of this community and the community itself to see that our property value is always enhanced. So if that means putting something up to giving the community an opportunity to look at that and say what they wanna say, that's my job. What the community does, that's their job. So for you to go around towns and go into meetings and everything, this is not a town council. This is not the Assembly. This is not the Senate. We are not politicians. That's not our role. Our role is to enhance the student achievement within the Carmel Central School District. And if this proposition does that, then that's what I support.
And just as far as what you said, as far as the school law, uh, it makes it clear, as you brought up in the past, to ensure that the comments are, uh, uh, construed or are accepted in a way that is a personal comment and not speaking in your capacity as a school board member, which is what the comments at the town board meetings did. At the beginning of the comments, they made absolutely clear, without a doubt, that the comments were personal comments and not reflective of other board members.
Then I refuse...
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't...
Gillette.
Yeah, and you can see in the letter, and it was submitted, uh, that they are my personal comments. And I have the examiner letter with me. And going on, uh, as far as, although at the, at the town level, that directly affects the town and that is why it was appropriate to go to the town and to speak with the town board and, uh, directly to the taxpayers. As far as the commercial property that's being taken off the tax rules, that is one of the few commercial properties in the Town of Kent that is being removed from the tax rules. The Town of Kent, for the past three or four years, maybe within, uh, between three and five years, so I don't wanna put a definitive, a definitive number on it, has kept taxes flat. With the removal of this property, that task becomes that much more difficult. School, uh, school taxes make up, in excess of seventy percent of our local property tax bill. It's not, uh, it's not the towns and it's not the county that are, uh, the cause of the tax burden in this community. It's the Carmel School District. The county and towns together make up less than thirty percent of the taxes. As far as hating taxes, uh, you know, I'm not gonna, uh, pretend to know what's in your heart, but, uh, as far as your public vote record, you voted for every single tax increase, uh, as long as you've been on the board. So, uh, the actions speak differently from the words. Just differently. But, and I also have a copy of, because I see you pulling that out.
From the county time, you had it? Everyone from the county time?
I submitted the same letter to all of the papers and if you wanna pass that down to Vice President Krupps. Um, it is in the, uh, where I signed the letter. It states, um, that the comments are my own and that they are not reflective of the board as a whole or individual board members.
So when it says, when it says, "When I ran for the school board, I promised the voters." And when it says on the bottom, it says John Kerzio, too, Carmel, Carmel school board member, so that, that's okay.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Can you read, uh...
Well, I, this is this one. I'm reading what I read, what I read yesterday in the, in the Putnam County Press Times. I read the fact that when I ran for the school board...
Which, which is a fact.
Which is a fact, but you're telling people you're doing this as a school board member.
No, I'm extending...
You cannot wear two hats, trustee Kerzio. You cannot do it. And you, and you cannot speak about taxes when many times you don't know where they come from. You have no idea. We can go from list to list to list about what the state of New York has required of school districts to, to raise taxes. It's not something that nobody, it's, it's, it's different than having the ability to, to, to limit amount of taxes. The majority of the taxes in the Carmel Central School District are basically mandated taxes. We have very, very little room to, to lower anything. And, and that's what most school board members, when they come on the school board, it's a wake-up call for them because they're very surprised. Though I just can't come on here and just lower the taxes. And most school board members have found that out and at least have the, the, the wherewithal to say, "I, I have some understanding now." You know, we have a lot in New York State that's mandated that a lot of other states and a lot of other places don't do. And that's, that's part of the reason why we, we have the taxes we do. And we're not looking to cut programs, we're not looking to cut athletics, we're not looking to cut things. If you wanna cut taxes, you can turn around and, and cut a lot of things. And then the students, and yourself included, only being out a couple of years, will not have gotten the education that you get in the Carmel School District. And most people I talk to say, "Look, we're doing a very good job." And they want to be like the Carmel Central School District. So, that's, that's my position. But you cannot say, "Well, they did it by error" or whatever, because they're quoting you as a school board member and according to school law, that is inappropriate. It just is. And that's a fact, you're not making that fact up.
You're entitled to your own facts. When that letter was...
It's not my fact, read the book.
You're trying to, uh, uh, turn something into something that it's not. And when that letter was submitted, as you have with you, uh, with the other letter, which you don't seem to want to state in public, uh, it's the same exact letter and it states in, uh, where my name is that they are my own personal comments. Uh, and, uh, that letter was submitted to, to every newspaper in the same manner with the same ending. Um, but as...
They didn't pick up on it?
I'm sorry?
They didn't pick up on it?
Okay. Uh, as, as far as ignorance and just because somebody doesn't agree with your view on the topic, doesn't, uh, mean that they're seeing small picture or seeing, or ignorant. They just have a different opinion than yourself. And to suggest otherwise is insulting, is insulting, uh, to those that have a different opinion than yours. Uh, as far as being able to cut taxes at the last, during the last budget, uh, I introduced approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars in savings that I found that did not cut one single program, that did not threaten one single job, uh, and not one penny of those cuts were approved. As far as other school districts, Carmel does offer a great education, an exceptional education. Uh, other districts such as Wapingers also offer an exceptional education. And the Wapinger School District, an average assessed housing in Carmel, if you move into the Wapingers District, is approximately two thousand dollars a year less in taxes.
Thank you, IBM. Thank you, IBM. Thank you, global factories, thank you. Different counties. You can't, you cannot compare. You can't, you can't, you can't do that, John. You can't compare, you know, apples to oranges. You just can't do that. It's not, it's just not right.
Seventy percent of the local property taxes... You're not entitled to your, your own facts.
Can I make a motion to adjourn this? Thank you.
I'll second it. All is in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I have finished. Tensions, the ayes have it. Have a pleasant evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Safe travels, all. Thank you for coming.
All right, Superintendent, we need you back as a witness.
I have no further questions, please, ma'am.
Mr. Susten, do you need a moment?
No, sir, thank you.
You prepared for the call?
I am.
Your witness.
Thank you. Good day, Superintendent. Uh, I just wanna, I wanna direct your attention back to this August, I believe you said it was August twenty-sixth, if I heard you correctly, two thousand seventeen. And you mentioned there was a special meeting, correct?
Yes.
And it was an open meeting for the members of the public?
Yes.
And was it held at here or in the high school or where?
It was held at Carmel High School in the library.
Okay. And if I understand your testimony, Mr. Lambert made certain comments publicly at the meeting?
Yes.
Now, are there minutes of that meeting? I understand from your testimony, there's no video of the meeting, so that we don't have a video, as we just saw, they lengthy video. Are there any minutes of that meeting that you can share with the hearing office?
There are not minutes.
And is that because there were not minutes taken of the special meeting, sir?
Correct.
And is that board policy not to take minutes of special meetings, which are open to the public? If you know, if you don't know, you don't have to answer.
No, I, I would say that if there, this was a, designated as a special meeting for the purpose of a work session, so there was no agenda for action items.
But I'm not asking you about that. I'm asking you whether, whether...
Correct.
Let me finish. I'm asking you whether there's a board policy with respect to special meetings not to take minutes?
I don't know whether that's true or false.
Did someone direct, was the secretary present?
No, she was not.
So the clerk of the district was not present?
No, she was, she was not.
Who normally takes minutes, meetings of your, minutes of your meetings, excuse me?
The board clerk.
And the board clerk was not present at this meeting?
No, she was not.
Was she excused from the meeting?
I believe she was on vacation.
Did anyone substitute for her for the purpose of taking minutes?
No, they did not.
And was that a decision you made?
No.
Was it a decision that the board as an entity made?
No, I don't believe it was.
So it just happened?
Correct.
Okay. So it just happened, there are no minutes to the meeting? Now, let's be clear on something. The letters that you pointed to and that have been introduced here as Exhibits Three and Four, do you have those documents, sir?
I'll give you...
There, there are two letters. I, I believe that the letters are identical and that they simply appear in two different periodicals, but you can verify that if you don't mind. One being the Putnam County Press slash Times and the other being the Putnam County Courier. And I'm referring Mr. Curry, Mr. Westfield to the, what's on the document. It appears to be your writing and someone's writing.
What, Three and Four are in front of the witness?
See what I'm saying? They seem to be the same letter to the editor, they just happen to be in two different periodicals. Do you agree with that?
From what I see, they seem almost identical.
Okay. Now, you said earlier that there was some guidance given by Mr. Lambert, Michael Lambert, that board members were permitted to speak about facts. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So for instance, in this particular article, letter from the editor, it says in the third, fourth paragraph, quoting, "In the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen adopted budget, I myself, without any input or assistance from any other board member, have identified approximately four hundred fifty thousand dollars in savings for the taxpayers." Do you see that?
I do.
Is that a fact?
I have no idea.
Were you the superintendent at the time?
Yes.
You were at the meetings, you told Mr. Selchuk?
Correct.
And at the meetings of the school board, is it an accurate statement that this gentleman sitting to your left raised those propositions?
You're asking me if four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a fact? I have no idea if four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a fact. I didn't have a calculator to, to calculate.
Okay, so it may be a fact and it may not, that's to be fair to you. You don't know.
Correct.
Okay, maybe a fact, but you don't know.
Correct.
And the gentleman who wrote this is a gentleman who is the proponent of those various changes and amendments, right?
Yes.
Mr. Kerzio?
Yes.
You were at the meetings, right? And it's accurate that in the meetings, he did represent that these were being offered as efforts to save money for the district, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then he says, "A minuscule amount when compared to the entire budget." And he, he states the amount of the budget, a hundred twenty-three million plus dollars. Do you see that?
Yes.
Is that a fact?
It is close to a fact.
And what's the fact? What was the entire budget at the time?
I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay. And then he wrote, "These savings range," referencing back to the savings that he says cumulatively of four hundred fifty thousand dollars, he says, "These savings range from as little as thirty dollars to as much as in excess of sixty thousand dollars." Do you know if that's a fact?
I do not know.
You don't know one way or the other?
No.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. This learned attorney, Mr. Lambert, when he was at the meeting, did he go over this, this letter and tell Mr. Kerzio which of these were permissible facts and which weren't?
He did not go over any of those.
But these were the letters that were of concern. As you explained, these were the letters that were of concern, right?
These were letters that raised concerns, yes.
Okay. But Mr. Lambert, and did you advise Mr. Lambert to show him these letters in advance of the meeting so he could perhaps give guidance with respect to the concrete letters?
No, I did not.
Did these letters actually come up at the meeting?
I don't believe they did.
Okay, so, just so we're all clear, there's a meeting held. One of the purposes is to discuss concerns about these letters that Mr. Riley had raised to you, right? Just so we're clear, I don't want any confusion. This is what you testified to, am I right?
I believe I testified to the fact that there were actions of Mr. Kerzio that included letters.
Are these the letters? Are these the letters that we're referring to? Included letters? Okay. And did you share in advance in any form these letters with Mr. Lambert?
No, I did not.
Why not?
Because I didn't know what questions were specifically going to be asked of Mr. Lambert.
Did you know these were the letters, at that time, before the April twenty-sixth or seventh meeting, did you know these were the letters that were of concern to Mr. Riley? did you know these were the letters that were of concern to Mr. Riley?
I knew that these were part of the concern.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. But you didn't share them with Mr. Lambert in advance?
No.
And Mr. Riley was present at this meeting, you said?
Yes.
And he showed Mr. Lambert these letters, right?
No.
No, no one showed him the letters, right?
No.
Okay. So now we're at the meeting. And isn't it accurate, sir, that at the meeting, what actually happened was that Mr. Lambert indicated to the board members present that they should include what he called the disclaimer or disclosure, saying that any letter is his or her personal opinion and not reflective of the board. Isn't that true?
I don't know if he referenced the letter.
Did he indicate that statements made by board members, that board members could make statements on subjects like the budget, but that they should make clear those were their personal opinions? Isn't that true?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lambert did not state at the meeting that board members could not make such statements, did he?
He did, in their capacity as a board member.
Wait a minute. He said that board members who are people were allowed to make statements with respect to their positions on issues like the budget, correct?
As private citizens.
Okay. Well, you say as private citizens, they're always board members while they're elected to the board. Mr. Curzio was a board member on the 27th. He's still a board member, right?
This is.
And Mr. Lambert was addressing board members. We agree with that, right? And he was indicating to the board members that as, as private citizens, they could make statements, correct?
If they identify themselves as such.
Okay. So from then, is it an accurate statement that Mr. Curzio, with regard to the next controversy, not back to May of 17, but the next controversy being about the capital budget, Mr. Curzio did in fact publish letters to the editor, correct?
Yes, I believe he did.
Okay. And when did he start publishing the letters to the editor with regard to his opposition to the bond issue?
I do not recall when the letters started to be published.
All right, well, let's give the hearing officer, just so that he has some chronology here, so we have an understanding of the context we're dealing in, by November 21st, okay? You've been the superintendent since August of 2015. When was this bond issue first approved in a vote by the school board?
I believe in October of 2017. I'm not sure what the date of the meeting was.
Was it October 20th somewhere?
That sounds like it was accurate.
Okay. So sometime, is it October 24th?
I would have to be looking at a calendar.
All right, don't remember, that's fine. Sometime in the, between the 20th and 30th, can you agree on that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, there was a board meeting before that October 20th vote, at which the subject of the bond issue was discussed by board members, right?
Yes.
And there were board members at that meeting who supported it, and there were board members who raised questions about it, weren't there?
I would say that's accurate.
So what that means to say is that there were some board members who said, in essence, they had reservations about the extent, the expanse of the bond issue, and there were others who defended it, right?
I would say that's accurate.
And the board eventually, not at that meeting when it was first debated, but at a subsequent meeting, did take a vote, right?
Yes.
And the vote was an opportunity for the board members to say whether they supported it as individuals or not.
Yes.
Okay. Now, it's also the case that at all your board meetings, and we saw a part of this, there was a, Mr., the board president, Mr. Riley, made a comment, board comments? Do you remember him saying that? It was on the first video, the beginning?
Yes, I believe he says that whenever that agenda item comes up.
Okay, so just so again, Mr. Selchik has some sense of the situation. There is a meeting held. Is it accurate that there are different agenda items on the meeting?
Yes.
And board members are permitted to speak to those agenda items, correct?
Yes.
And they can oppose it, they can favor it, they can do whatever they want with regard to the agenda item, right?
Yes.
In other words, they could say they're supportive of X or they oppose X for whatever their reason?
I would say yes.
Okay. Now, after that all finishes, specific agenda items or whatever give and take there is on those items, there's also a time for what's called board comment. Is that true?
It is.
Okay. And are there any rules and regulations which this board has adopted with regard to board comment?
I do not believe there are specific regulations that this board has adopted.
Okay. Well, you heard, for example, quite a long interchange between Mr. Curzio and the board vice president, Mr. Kreps, at the, I believe that's the September 5th meeting. We were just watching, correct? And there's a president of the school board, who was present for that, Mr. Riley, correct? Am I, you were present, correct?
Yes.
I did not hear, tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Riley intervene and say, "Gentlemen, we're not permitted to do that at this meeting." Did you hear any such statement by him?
No.
And there was no intervention by him either when Mr. Curzio, at the November 21st meeting, began speaking and said, "This is my view," and whatever he said about the bond issue. Would you agree with him or disagree with him? He didn't intervene, did he, the board president?
No, he did not.
Okay. And both of those occurred after Mr. Lambert, according to you, was at this meeting on the 26th or 7th of August and gave whatever guidance he gave, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Riley was present at that meeting?
Yes.
He was board president as of that time?
Yes.
Okay. Now, let's direct your attention to the period between November 21st and December 5th. So we had the comments made by Mr. Curzio, Mr. Selchik heard on the 21st. And in essence, Mr., with summarizing, Mr. Curzio explained why he was opposed to the bond issue and he urged individuals to vote, no, as I recall, correct?
That's what I heard, yes.
Okay, now, you were the superintendent, you were sitting there.
Yes.
You heard it. Did you speak to Mr. Curzio that evening about his comments?
No, I did not.
Did you speak to him between then and November 21st and December 5th about those comments?
No, I did not.
Did you speak to Mr. Lambert in that two-week period about those comments?
No, I did not.
And did you request, when I say Mr. Lambert, I'm speaking about an individual, but did you request any attorney to speak to Mr. Curzio and say, "We have a bond issue coming up on December 11th," I think it was the 11th when the vote was, "And we have a board member who's violating the dictates that you set down." Did you do that?
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. Between November 21st and December 5th, in that two-week period, with this bond vote on December 11th, and I'm right about that, correct?
Yes.
Did you speak to any board, any lawyer for the district and tell that lawyer you wanted him to speak to Mr. Curzio because you felt Mr. Curzio was acting outside of the dictates that were stated in the August meeting?
No, I did not.
Do you know if any other board, any board member did that? Do you know?
Spoke to an attorney?
Yes. Not any attorney, but a school board attorney, your attorney.
I don't believe anyone asked an attorney to speak to Mr. Curzio.
Okay. Now, then comes this statement by Mr. Curzio on the 5th, where he read this letter, I don't know whose letter it was, and he basically said that he endorsed the perspective that that individual had. I think it was a senior citizen from Kent, as I recall. You heard that?
Yes.
Okay. Whoever it was, be quiet. All right. Now, your time to speak. All right, now, then a few days later is the vote. Is that true?
Yes.
And the vote overwhelmingly defeats this bond issue, right?
Defeated.
Defeated, okay. And then about eight days later, there's, that is the 19th, there's this board meeting, and at that board meeting, Mr. Curzio has brought up these charges, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you remember the date of the vote for the, for the project?
11.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Rochfield asked you some questions regarding another set of documents, which I believe would be in front of you, which would be five and six, if you don't mind taking a look at those.
Five and six are in front of the witness?
Thank you, sir. As I understand it, again, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a video production company, you mentioned it, a company, correct? And it's called Euro Video Productions LLC? Is that accurate?
We, we.
Contract?
Yes.
You contract with a company called Euro Video Productions LLC?
Yes.
And you have an annual contract with them?
I don't believe it's a contract, because I believe it falls under the threshold as far as how much we end up spending on them.
Well, let me ask a question this way. Do you have some sort of agreement with them that lasts, other than meeting to meeting? Or do you reconsider them meeting to meeting? How does it work?
No, we reconsider them every year.
So you have an annual agreement with them, whether it's a contract, or whatever, an annual understanding or agreement?
Yes.
And under that understanding or agreement, if I hear you correctly, they are to video not special meetings, but regularly called meetings of the school board?
Yes.
And they are then to create apparently seven DVDs of the meetings for the district? Since I see seven DVDs on both these bills, I'm going to assume that that's true for the whole year.
Yes, it is.
And those are then to be circulated, correct?
Yes.
And was there ever, after the November 21st meeting, any discussion whether to excise or edit out of the video, which is going to be circulated, the comments of Mr. Curzio?
No, there was not.
What about after the December 5th meeting? Was there any discussion at that point about editing out, because they were deemed, quote, inappropriate, the comments of Mr. Curzio?
No, there was not.
Okay. Did any board member recommend or suggest that, because the comments were appropriate, they should not be circulated to, to the broader community?
No.
And you as superintendent didn't suggest that?
No, I did not.
Okay. So the circulation that I'm understanding occurs is in the regular course of business. In other words, each meeting, each regular meeting is circulated in a normal, standard way by whomever circulates it, whomever it circulates, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's regardless of what's on the tape, so to speak. Whatever happens at the meeting is circulated.
Yes.
Do you have any knowledge of what Article 8, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution covers yourself? I know you're not, you may be a lawyer, but you're here as a superintendent, not a lawyer. But do you have any knowledge of that as superintendent?
If I'm not looking at the specific article, I do not know what it says.
Okay, fair. Is it a fair and accurate statement that, to your understanding, again, you being the school superintendent, I know you're not an expert witness, but your opinion as a school superintendent, if you have one, each school board member, as I understand it, has a duty and responsibility to independently analyze matters like budgets, correct?
Yes, I believe they do.
And they have a responsibility to make known their views with regard to that, correct? You don't have any disagreement with that, do you?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
All right, let me, let me be very sharp. I'm not trying to fool you. Each school board member, having come to a conclusion with regard to the propriety of a proposition which is to be voted on by the public, that is, the budget, we're talking about a typical annual budget, does have a fiduciary responsibility to advise the public of his or her opinion, correct? In other words, you have a vote. Each person votes and thereby indicates their opinion, correct?
I believe that is the time for a board member to express their opinion, is the vote.
Okay. And by dint or by force of his or her vote, that is, the vote at the meeting where the vote occurs, each member conveys their view as to whether that is inappropriate, is appropriate or not. That's the purpose of the vote, right?
I believe it's whether they would like to move it forward to the public, yes or no. That's how they vote.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything further, this gentleman, it's almost nine o'clock.
Any re-ereg?
Briefly.
Proceed.
Servant, you testified about this meeting that Mr. Lambert attended.
I can't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
You testified about this meeting that Mr. Lambert attended.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. You said it was a designated meeting for the purposes of a work session.
Yes.
Did that have anything to do with whether minutes were taken at that meeting?
We do not always have our board clerk at, at every special work session. Just has not always been the practice.
And when you don't have the board clerk at these work sessions, do, are minutes taken?
Generally, no.
I have nothing further.
Any recourse on that?
Thank you, not on that.
All right, one second. Thank you, Superintendent, your excuse as a witness. For the witnesses.
No further witnesses.
For address, does the respondent have any witnesses?
We take a five-minute recess.
Absolutely. We're going to recess for five minutes off the record.
No, no, broken up.
C U R is the I O. Do you have that? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm on the penalty of perjury to tell the truth to Mr. Curzio?
I do.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Selchik. Mr. Curzio, could you tell us what you do every day, apart from being on the school board?
I'm a full-time student. I own a college, I'm a senior.
How old are you? And when were you elected to the school board?
I was elected in May of 2016.
Did you run a campaign?
I did.
And during your campaign, did you make certain representations or, if you will, promises to the voters?
Yes, I did.
You explain to Mr. Selchik what they were?
Sure. My, on my campaign literature and in discussions with voters, I stated that I would fight for fiscal responsibility, that I would always stand with students, and that I would help to oppose the corporate core changes.
When you came onto the school board, what was the first year, it's a fiscal year, which you participated in the budget process?
The first budget I participated in was the 2017-2018 school year.
And in terms of time, when was that?
So the budget vote was in May of 2017, the budget process. We get the approval of that.
So sometime in the calendar year 2017, trying to draw a budget for the year starting September 17 through June 18, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in that process, first of all, could you explain to the, to the hearing officer what the process is from the point of view of the school board member?
As far as constructing the budget?
Yes, exactly.
So the, first the administration's budget, they presented to the board. We had a work session in which we went line by line through the item. That meeting presented an opportunity to the various board members to bring out any questions, objections, concerns, support for various line items in the budget overall. And then we proceeded to have additional meetings, which finally resulted in the budget vote amongst the board itself to send to the public. And then there was a subsequent vote by the public on whether to accept or reject the budget.
So the, the time involved from the board's member, board member's perspective, from when you got the administration's or the superintendent's proposed budget to when you vote on a budget to send to the public, about how long is that period of time?
I believe we voted in April of 2017 to send the budget to the voters. I don't recall the exact date of when we had the work meeting concerned, going through line by line, but it would have been obviously earlier than April.
In that process, did you play a role?
I did.
Can you just, again, briefly, given the interest of time, just explain the role you played since it's come up here already. Go ahead.
I made my concerns known regarding various line items. I presented our asked meant questions as well of the administration. I had discussions with fellow board members. And I ultimately presented approximately $450,000 in savings I identified, which I recommended to the board, or that those were broken down into many different areas. And the board ultimately chose not to adopt any of my proposals.
So none of the alleged savings were adopted?
Correct.
Did any of the board members propose any savings?
There were before, there were a couple positions before the budget was handed over to us that were withdrawn before it even became the board's chance to comment during the work session. But I don't recall specific savings by any of the board members.
Okay. So once the board, did you vote on whether you agreed with that budget and that it should be presented to the public or not?
We voted no.
You voted no. So you had opposition to the budget?
Correct.
And did you publicly state that opposition?
I did.
And in what context did you publicly state opposition?
As far as the editors.
Yeah. How did you state it?
Sure. Obviously, talking with people one-on-one and in groups, social media, letters to the editor, flyers.
Were there any times during the board comment period you spoke about the budget?
I did.
And we don't have the tapes here, but was it similar to what we saw here in the sense of expressing your opinions to why it wasn't something that should be supported?
I made my opinions widely known that I did not support the budget, and I did not believe that it was, that it did not provide tax relief or hold the line on taxes to our mutual constituents.
Now, get back to the question, because that was an important question. He asked you if you made those comments during the comment section of a board meeting.
I don't recall if I specifically asked people to vote no during a board meeting, but I made clear my opposition to the budget.
So you engaged in comments during that part of the board meeting?
Yes.
Go ahead, counsel.
Okay. Now, did the superintendent, at that point, when I say at that point, after you made those kinds of comments at these board meetings, in the comment period, did he approach you and indicate that was impermissible?
He did not.
Did any board member?
During the comment?
After you made the comment. So it wouldn't have been right at that moment. Did any of the board members approach you?
No.
Now, there comes a time, as I understand it, that that budget was approved. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And you're now in August, so a few months later, and there's this meeting that we heard about through the testimony of the superintendent. Were you at that meeting?
I was.
Do you remember that meeting?
I do.
Can you tell the hearing officer what happened at that meeting pertinent to the issue of board members' comments?
Sure.
Which means this?
And I assume we're talking about the August twenty sixth special meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, tell me your comment.
A question was asked, I believe, by Vice President Krebs concerning individual board members expressing opinions on budgets and capital projects. The attorney president said that any comments made would have to be done in a manner which the public would perceive and were made in a way that were their own individual statements and not speaking on behalf of the board, which is previous to that also, what Vice President Krebs.
All right, stay with that. We'll get to the previous. So just finish what Mr. Lambert said, if you can.
Sure. So that was what he said as far as making sure that your individual comments were construed in a way that represented your opinions and not those the board as a whole or of the board members.
Okay. Was there any discussion about disclosure, disclaimer, anything of that sort through Mr. Lambert?
Before Mr. Lambert?
No, with Mr. Lambert. Did he make any comments about disclaimers, how he was supposed to do it? What did he say?
That the disclosures should be at the end of the letter and say that they're your own personal opinion, not reflective of the board as a whole or individual board members.
And he sits on the desk of Krebs.
Yes.
Is Mr. Krebs a more experienced board member than you?
He's had more time on the board than he serves since 1999.
Okay. Did he speak to you before the August meeting about this same subject?
Yes.
And when did he speak to you?
He spoke with me, and it was the board, it wasn't a one-on-one, it was the board as a whole.
When was it?
It was the meeting, I believe it was the meeting immediately following the budget vote in May.
What was the substance, as you remember, to Mr. Krebs and to the board, inclusive of you?
They showed me, or spoke to me, that comments made such as letters to the editor, the identification piece at the end should be made in a way that it's your own personal opinion, and you're not speaking on behalf of the board or any other board member.
When he spoke to you, did he make any comments to you about comments you had made during the public comment period of the board?
Not for the public comments during the board.
Okay. He was speaking about letters to the editor?
Yes.
Okay. So after you had that advice from Mr. Krebs and you had this conversation among, with amongst others, Mr. Lambert, in the capital campaign issue, did you follow that advice?
I did.
How did you follow it?
Whenever I submitted a letter to the editor, I would always include a disclaimer at the end that says that the letter is my own personal opinion, not necessarily reflective of any other board member or the board as a whole. In addition, when I spoke at two town board meetings, I prefaced my comments saying again that these are my personal comments, not necessarily reflective of any other individual board member or the board as a whole.
All right. Now, let's go to the capital budget issues, which are more directly the focus of this particular proceeding. When, as a board member, did you first get knowledge that there was at least a potential for a capital budget bond to be put out to the community?
I believe our first meeting to discuss it was the August meeting, in part.
When you say the August meeting, you mean the same special meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And did someone make a presentation at that time about this capital project?
There were, I don't remember if it was settled, I don't believe it was settled, actually, on one specific plan, but there were different proposals. Maybe there were suggestions made by board members as far as which directions to take in.
Were you participating in those suggestions and directions? Okay. Could you give, again, Mr. Selchik, some flavor for what the bond issue was about? So we have a sense of that.
As far as what it entailed?
Yeah, what it entailed?
It entailed two propositions, Proposition A and Proposition B. Approximately half of the overall, eighty-five point six million dollar, two propositions was an eight hundred seat auditorium center. There were field, works with field and parking, a proposed new transportation facility, ADA compliance, solar, and roofs. I'm not sure if I missed anything in my hand.
And it was eighty-five point six million?
Correct. The two propositions set up together.
And with, just so that, again, we're clear on the record, was it possible for a voter to vote for one proposition and not another?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So there were two separate propositions that were going to be on the ballot at the same time, as it turned out?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in the course of the discussion, it started, as you say, in August, did you offer opinions with regard to different items?
I did.
Did other board members?
They did.
And was this give and take done in public meetings? In other words, when I say public meetings, I mean regularly scheduled meetings?
Yes.
So there was a discussion and, if you will, debate amongst board members?
Yes.
Okay. And did board members give their opinions in that context about the different parts of this?
They did.
And you were participating, as were others?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but were there parts of it that you agreed with, parts that you didn't agree with, or did you just disagree with everything?
There were aspects I agreed with and aspects I disagreed.
And you made that clear?
Yes.
All right. So at some point, the propositions were finalized?
Yes.
And was there a date that there was a vote by the board on whether to move them forward?
There was.
Do you know when that was?
I believe it was October twenty fourth.
And was there, again, a public discussion in which board members expressed their opinion on that date?
There was, yes.
Were you the only one to express an opinion?
All seven members expressed opinions.
And what was your opinion as publicly expressed?
My publicly expressed opinion was, as they were in their current forms, I could not support the two propositions.
Either one.
Either one, correct.
Did any other board members share your, at least publicly as they stated, share your opposition?
There were several comments made expressing disappointment to several, to different members, but not overall. It was ultimately a six to one vote.
So there was a vote held on the twenty-fourth, whether to put these two propositions before the public?
Yes.
And you were the decenter?
Correct.
Okay. Now, did you, at that point, the board having voted, decide to do anything?
Yes.
What did you decide to do?
I decided to take my opinion directly to the public, to speak directly to the public in various manners, and to help defeat the propositions.
And why'd you do that?
Because I did not believe that these two propositions were financially sustainable for our district and taxpayers.
Was that consistent with your campaign, if you will?
Yes.
And by the way, when you ran for board, did you have an opponent?
I did.
Was your opponent an incumbent board member?
Yes.
And you defeated the incumbent?
Yes.
Okay. Now, tell Mr. Selchik, again, briefly, I want you to go through every meeting. What did you do in mounting an opposition to this? And starting in October, late October, going forward to, I believe, we have decided it was a December eleventh vote. So you're talking about a period of roughly seven, eight, seven weeks? What did you do?
So outside of the two board meetings that were displayed previously, outside of those comments, I distributed flyers, put up yard signs, social media activity, contacting people, talking with people, as many people as I could reach, to express my opinion and why they should vote no. In addition, I went to two town board meetings and encouraged the voters to vote no.
Now, we heard before factual versus non-factual. And it was said by the witness, as you heard, who was sitting here, as was everyone else, that when Mr. Lambert spoke to the board, he made a distinction between factual information and other opinion. Do you remember Mr. Lambert stating that on August twenty-sixth in any form?
Yes.
Okay. What did he say in that regard?
That the district obviously cannot, as a district, take a position to support or oppose a budget or a capital project, that it would have to be factual information, such as the mailer that's sent out during the annual budget vote from the district or the mailer that was sent out during the capital project.
So that was relevant to the district, quad district. But did he make any comments about the school board, specific school board members in that regard?
Just that it had to be your own personal comments, not speaking on behalf of the board.
Now, did you, in the two meetings you went to, the board meetings and your flyers and other social media, did you attempt to present what you understood to be factual information?
Yes.
And did you, in any way, try to conceal your advocacy against these two projects?
No.
Did any of the board members approach you privately or at a meeting and speak with you and indicate to you that he or she felt it was anything inappropriate about your advocacy in the broader community?
No.
Did the superintendent?
No.
And did you continue that advocacy from roughly late October into and through the date of the election, so to speak?
Yes.
Referendum? Okay. I asked the superintendent this question as well, but I'd like to hear your answer, because it may not be obvious from watching this tape. There came a period of time, November twenty first, when you started speaking, and we saw what you had to say. In that course of that discussion, did any of the board members, including the president, attempt in any way to interrupt you?
They did not.
After you finished, as I heard it, one of the female board members asked the meeting to be adjourned. Remember that, November twenty first meeting? Who was that board member?
I believe that would have been Trusting DeTurst.
And as I heard it, and just to corroborate this, you were the last person who spoke?
Yes.
Did any other board member indicate a desire to speak?
No.
So the adjournment was on consent?
Yes.
At the next meeting, that's shown, it was a December fifth meeting, after, is it accurate, because we didn't see all of the tape, after you spoke, then it appears that Mr. Krebs started speaking? And then you went back and forth, as we saw for quite a while, as betwixt the two of you speaking, and retorting each other in whatever ways you were doing. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Did any of the other board members participate in that that we didn't see? Or did that end with just the two of you?
I believe it ended with the two of us, the two.
And did the president in any way rule out of order any of the comments that either of you made?
No.
Did the school district develop a video at some point with regard to the budget?
Yes.
And did they develop a video with regard to the bond propositions?
Oh, I'm sorry. They developed a video in regard to the bond propositions. I don't recall they developed a video as far as the budget.
And did you have the occasion to watch the video that dealt with the bond proposition?
I did, yes.
And was the video supportive?
It was.
And do you know if the board, how the board, excuse me, how the district published or publicized that video?
It was played during board meetings, and it was also placed on the district website.
Did you know if it was paid for publicly or privately?
It would have been paid for using district funds. Taxpayer money.
Did the board, just so we're clear, vote on whether to authorize funds for that video?
I looked back in the minutes. I could not find authorized funds specific to that video.
Was there a board discussion that you can recall in which it was authorized to produce and so distribute that video?
Not that I recall, no.
You didn't participate in any such discussion?
Again, not that I recall, no. Nothing I can find. Also, going back and researching.
Do you remember how long that video is?
I believe it was approximately six minutes.
Now, we talked earlier about this board comment period. Just clarifying, is that a period that occurs after each, at the end of each meeting?
Yes.
And as a relatively new board member, I understand you joined in sixteen, so you were on the board about a year and a half at this point, and they're trying to remove you from the board, was there any guidance given to you, other than, you've told us already, about the nature of public comments by board members in that period of time?
Nothing outside of what I already described, no.
Did Mr. Lambert, when he spoke in August, reference Article eight of the New York State Constitution?
Not to my recollection, no.
Did anyone reference that article to you at any time before you got these charges?
No.
Now, in his opening statement, and you were sitting here, as was everyone else, counsel referenced the word private. Do you recall him saying private agenda or private position?
I do. I wouldn't remember what context exactly.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this question, then, without referencing whatever you may have said. The comments that you made and that you're charged with making, do you view those comments as comments you made as a board member, as a private citizen, as both? And can you explain that to the hearing officer, please?
Sure. Obviously, as an elected official, I believe you have a responsibility to express, excuse me, your opinions on various items that come before the board that are up for a vote and discussion. And throughout the whole process, I made my opinion very clear. And also, as such, I have a responsibility to the people I represent to make my opinion clear in how I'm representing their voice to the board. And comments outside, obviously, I was very careful to demonstrate that they were my personal opinions, not necessarily reflective of any other board member. And I believe that during the two meetings, excuse me, in question, it was also very clear that those were my own opinions.
They were your opinions as a board member, with knowledge that you gained as a board member?
Yes.
They were also your personal opinions?
Yes.
All right. I don't have anything further at this time. Thank you. All right. I don't have anything further at this time. Thank you. Are you ready for Curzio?
I am, I am.
Proceed.
Mr. Curzio, during, we listened, we saw these two videos. The first video from November 2117, when you made your presentation, I guess it's during the comments section, you were reading that from the document, weren't you?
I was reading it from a prepared statement.
Right. So you prepared a statement in advance of the November 2117 board meeting in order to be able to read it into the record in the comments section of that board meeting?
Yes.
And had you reviewed that prepared statement with any board member beforehand?
I did not.
During the December 5, 2017 meeting, you said in response to Mr. Krepp that you had read the school law. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And had you read the school law?
I was given a copy of the school law book when I became a school board member. Also, I believe those comments towards Mr. Krepp were in reference to a two-page sheet that the board had provided me referencing school law, and again, as far as the comments in letters to the editor, for example, back immediately following the budget vote in 2017.
So you've been provided with a book of school law, and you've been provided with a two-page document of further guidelines for board members. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, the document, again, referenced.
Well, you've answered my question. Thank you. And was it your understanding that at each of those meetings on the, well, we'll throw that, on the November 2717 meeting, you did actually ask people to vote against the bond referendum, right?
I did.
And you did the same thing on the December 5, 2017 meeting, right?
I did.
And you did that while sitting at the table among other board members, right?
Yes.
And at the time you were reading that, you were serving as a board member, correct? In both those occasions?
Yes, I was a board member at the time.
And you were acting as a board member from the dais when you were reading these things into the record?
Yes, it was a board meeting.
And had you ever, in your readings of school law or these handouts, read somewhere that you could, during a board meeting, ask voters to vote in favor or against something that they would be voting upon?
I never saw it in the school law book that I was provided, the document that was provided to me by, I guess it was Mr. Krepp that handed it to me, referenced letters to the editor and specifically the disclaimer, which was requested of me to do going forward after the budget vote.
So the answer to my question, yes or no?
Could you repeat the question?
Could you read it back, please?
And had you ever knew readings of the school law or these handouts, read somewhere that you could, during a board meeting, ask voters to vote in favor or against something that they would be voting upon?
Yes or no?
Not before the meeting, no.
Had you inquired as to whether you could do that?
Just again, after I was provided that document?
Did you make an inquiry of someone about whether you could make such a statement at a board meeting, sitting at the dais as a board member? Yes or no?
Specific to those comments, no.
So you had no knowledge, one way or the other, let's see, let me ask you if I'm correct. You had no knowledge, one way or the other, when you were speaking at those board meetings, and telling people to vote against a matter that they would be addressing in an election, whether or not it was proper for you to do so? Is that fair? Did you know whether it was proper, or did you not know whether it was proper, or did you not know?
Again, as far as specific to those comments, I believe that those comments were proper.
And what led you to believe that you could tell members of the community at a board meeting that they should vote against those bond propositions? What led you to believe that you could do that?
As far as those comments specifically?
You know specifically?
Yes. I believe, again, that I have a
I didn't ask you what you believed. What led you?
Wait a minute. Can you answer the question? Excuse me.
All right, I will. I have to answer the question.
This is his opinion. You can get his opinion.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. I'll rephrase it if you want.
You want to ask a new question?
No, it's basically the same question. I'm not going to try to avoid it. What did you read or see or hear that led you to believe that you had the right to advise voters at a board meeting while serving as a board member that they should vote against a proposition?
Obviously, as an elected official, I believe that I have a right to express my opinion on various matters, all matters that come before the board. I believe that the people we mutually represent expect us to voice various opinions that are of a consequential nature to them and affect them directly, especially in this case, has an impact on their taxes that they pay. So I believe, obviously, as an elected official, we all have a responsibility to take an opinion on that. And in addition, obviously, the freedom of speech protected and afforded to us in the First Amendment to the Constitution.
All right. I'll break it down, because I asked you about this. What did you read before the November 21 meeting that led you to believe that you had a right to tell members of the public how to vote? Did you read something?
Nothing in school law, no.
Right. Did you read something somewhere else that said you had that right?
In the First Amendment to the Constitution.
So your reason for believing that you had the right to make that statement about telling people how to vote was the First Amendment to the Constitution. Fair?
Objection, objection to the form. Telling people how to vote is a different matter.
Rephrase the question.
Sure. Your statement, directing people to vote no, saying to people they should vote no, your source, your source in terms of what you read that led you to believe you had the right to do that was the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Is that your testimony?
As far as asking people to vote no, yes.
Okay. And in terms, is there any other source, apart from your personal, that led you to believe you had the right as a board member to state on a board meeting that people should vote no on a matter that they would be considering in an election? Was there anything other than the First Amendment to the Constitution?
Outside of that, obviously, in previous meetings, it was made, various board members made it very clear where they stood, obviously without explicitly saying it. In addition, there was a video produced by the district that started off in, whether it was the first sentence or it was in the first part of the video, that said, quote, "its tongue," when, unquote, referencing the project. So
Did, is there a board member at a meeting that you recall telling people they should vote yes on this bond proposition?
Not explicitly.
In this video, which we don't have, is it your testimony?
You have, excuse me.
Well, I don't have.
Don't say you don't have. It's a district video.
Which we don't have at this hearing, so far in evidence, is there, is it your testimony that there was a statement in that video telling people how they should vote? Yes or no?
It started off saying "its tongue."
So the answer to my question is, in terms of actually telling people how they should vote, the answer is no?
Objection to form. It's a matter of interpretation. He's saying the words "its tongue."
If you want to put the video into evidence topic, you might.
Well, I don't think, they raised the video, not me. Any event, any event, in terms of actually telling people that they should vote yes, is it your testimony that that video actually said that?
It did not explicitly say to vote yes.
Am I correct that you have no recollection during the board meetings about the budget earlier in that timeframe, specifically asking people to vote no?
As far as me?
Yeah, yeah.
I do not recall asking people to vote no during the budget, during the board meeting in board member comments.
You answered my question. Thank you. So during the, the only times that you have a rec, is it fair, it's a fair statement that the only times you have a recollection at a board meeting, well, actually as a board member, telling people to vote no on something they would be voting upon, was at the November 21 and December 5 meetings?
As far as during board comments?
While you're sitting at the dais during the board meeting, you're serving as a board member at the day.
I believe that those were the only two meetings where I asked the voters to vote no.
Did you have an orientation as a board member?
We had to go to two different, I believe, one was a fiscal training orientation and the other was an orientation for new board members.
And these were two separate meetings that you attended?
They were. The fiscal train was online. The orientation for new board members was in Westchester County.
Was that done by an attorney?
I don't know if
If you don't know, you don't know.
Well, let him ask. Do you know who did it? Do you know who presented the program?
I do not remember the specific names of the people.
So you don't know who presented, you don't recall that that person was an attorney or not, right?
I do not recall that.
Do you recall what organization presented that orientation?
I believe it was the New York State School Boards Association.
I don't have a further question.
And at that meeting, sir, was there any discussion about what a school board member could do at a public meeting?
I do not believe so, no.
Mr. Rushfield asked you some questions about people expressing directly vote no, vote yes. As a school board member, when you have a discussion and school board members vote yes to the budget, or no to the budget, do you interpret that as a, do you interpret that as a message to the public as how the public should vote?
Objection, leading, extremely.
Rephrase the question.
How do you interpret, as a school board member, the comments you heard during the course of the capital budget campaign, the capital budget vote, from other school board members? How did you interpret them?
I believe that it was apparent that the other members were encouraging voters to vote yes.
Did the video that you say the school district put out have the same message?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that video?
Not while I'm at this current time, but I have access to it, yes.
The school district put it out, right?
Yes.
So they have access to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it still on the website?
I believe it was another website made for the capital project, and as of last night, I believe
We have access to the video. It's not still on the website.
Wait a minute. You were answering a question about whether it was on the website. Could you, was that answer recorded?
Yes.
Could I hear that back, please? Because I'm here, I'm where I'm sitting.
I asked the question.
No, no, I
You asked.
What I was going to suggest is
Wait, let her do this.
I do not have a
Let her do this, and then we'll hear you.
Question, okay, do you have that video? Answer, now I'm at this current time, do I have access to it, yes. Question, the school district put it out, right? Answer, yes. Question, so they have access to it? Answer, yes. And then the superintendent says, right.
So what I was going to
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's what I was afraid of. You started, you gave an answer
He did say something that it was removed, or it's, the site's on a separate site?
Could you just have that? Give the answer to Mr. Selchik's question again, so we have that part of the record.
Sure. It was taken off the main district website, the cardalschools.org, but there was a separate website that was made for the capital project vote, and as of either last night or the night before, that video remains on that website.
Okay. What I was going to suggest is, while we keep the record open, we'll give you the video, six-minute video.
No objection. That's fine.
We're going to make that an exhibit?
Yes.
Make it board number nine?
Could be board number nine.
Video of, what, and this was a video of the bond issue?
Yeah, regarding the bond issue. Let's make it very neutral. Video regarding the bond issue. Okay.
So we'll leave the record open for a copy of that. One would you provide it to respondent?
Unless somebody is telling me that there's a problem, is there going to be a problem?
Well, let's go off the record if you need to consult with your client. You want to go off the record?
I can do this openly.
No, I don't want it on the record.
I know, it just needs to be on the record, but I can do it.
Off the record. Go ahead, ask your question.
Is there going to be a problem getting it?
I don't know if I can get it right now.
No, we don't need it right now.
Oh.
After the fact, you can.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
On the record. Proceed.
Or, I don't have anything further at this time.
One second. No recruit us?
No, you can.
This is excuse. Thank you, sir. On the rest, anything further on behalf of the district?
No, unless you'd like me to give you and Mr. Sussman the case, well, the cases I cited in my open.
I think it would be good to take them down, and you don't have to put them with the brief. Let's go off the record. At the same time, while we're distributing those, we're off the record. Why don't the two, you two gentlemen agree on a date for a brief?
Depends on when we get the transcript. Let's find that out first. It's not wrapped, right?
Two weeks and, how long do you get after two weeks?
Two weeks just couldn't, where are we?
Let's take a look.
That would be the end of the month.
Two weeks will take us to January 31st, exactly. So let's go to the next week, if you want. How many, how much time from, let's say you get the transcripts on February 2nd.
My problem is I have a month-long criminal trial.
That's why I want you to discuss it.
I don't want it to be up to February. February 28th, whatever date you want to make, end of February.
Well, you know, obviously I'd like it to be early, but it's only two weeks from now.
So on the record, parties are going to submit post hearing briefs, and I'm not going to make them dependent on the receiving transcript, because we both all may get it at a different time. Briefs will be posted no later than February 28th, hard copies. I want them by mail. Parties are going to exchange simultaneously.
Yes, sure.
Parties do exchange. Okay. Before we go off the record, we'll also note on the record that copies of cases are going to be exchanged. That does not preclude either one of you from citing other cases in your briefs. The law is at your disposal. And just so the members of the board understand what's going to happen, and so that Mr. Curzio understands. Consistent with my authority, which was given to me by the board on December 19, 2017, I've conducted the hearing. My remaining job now is to assist the board, and I have to now prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law, and I'll submit those to the board. I'll also submit it, obviously, to both attorneys, and I'll do that 30 days after my receipt of the briefs, or sooner if I can do that. The subject I'll link to the briefs, which are going to be received by end of the day, 2/28, they're posted 2/28, so they're going to be received that day. So my 30 days will begin from my receipt of the briefs, and that'll be forwarded to council, and he'll forward it to the board. In that case, we're off the record. Hearing's adjourned.
So let me share the stuff that I cited.